Okay, one minute showtime here. See, Dougie's been up to his old tricks again, eh? Okay, good morning, everyone. I'll call the Tuesday, November 18th Committee, the whole meeting to order. And I would like to declare that all councillors are present with the exception of councillor Robbie Hiltz, who is joining us virtually. So you hear us okay, councillor Hiltz? Okay, alright. So we'll move forward. Before we go to the agenda today, I'll do the land acknowledgement. The municipality of the County of Kings is in Mi'kmaq, the ancestral, unceded, and current territory of the Mi'kmaq peoples. The municipality of the County of Kings is a neighbour to Annapolis Valley First Nations and Glouscap First Nations, as well as a diverse urban and rural indigenous population. We are all treaty people and commit to upholding the peace and friendship treaties and working towards reconciliation in all areas of the municipality. Like to welcome everyone here today, and we have an agenda in front of you, council. Is there any additions anyone would like to make to the agenda, councillor McPherson?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, through you, if possible, I'd like to add under other business infill.
Okay.
Thank you.
So we'll call that 10A. Thank you. Councillor Sappington?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was hoping under other business, we could add Global Summit in Toronto.
Okay, that'll be 10B.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? No? Alright, would somebody like to move approval of the agenda with those two additions, please? Moved by councillor Allen, second by councillor Harding. All those in favour or against, please vote accordingly.
Aye.
Aye. Motion, motion carried. Disclosure of conflict of interest. Does any councillor have a conflict of interest on any of the items that we're going to be discussing today and would like to declare so now? Seeing none, hearing none, we will now move on to the approval of the minutes. So is there any errors or omissions of the minutes of October 21st, 2025, that anyone noticed? No? Can we have a motion to approve the minutes, please? Moved by councillor Luce, second by councillor Sappington. All those in favour or against, please vote accordingly. Are you voting councillor Hiltz? Councillor Hiltz, are you with us?
I am. Can you folks hear me?
We can now. Are you voting on the approval of the minutes?
I vote in favour.
Thank you. Motion carried. Okay, we'll move on to business arising from the minutes. Anyone see any business arising from the minutes of October 21st, 2025? No? Okay. First up on presentations, we have Fire Smart Canada. Jennifer Daniels will presenting. So we'll invite Jennifer to the podium, please.
Red light on. Good morning, Mayor, Deputy Mayor and councils. Thank you very much for allowing me to do the presentation this morning on Fire Smart. I understand I have 10 minutes and I'm going to talk really fast because there is a plethora of information. Alright, make sure I get my clicker done here. It's not like the remote control at home, I'm afraid. It wasn't me. Thank you. So just a quick little overview about myself. I'm a firefighter with West Hans municipality, captain, training officer, fire prevention officer as well, mental health advocate, and Fire Smart NRP, so neighbourhood recognition program facilitator, and advanced home assessor. More recently, I'm also a fire service coordinator with the County of Annapolis in alternate rebuild. So what is Fire Smart? Certainly with the recent wildfires that we've had in the Annapolis Valley this year, and Tan Talon and Shelburne, Fire Smart became more prominent here in Nova Scotia. So it's basically a program that started in the US, was adopted by Canada about 30 years ago, and is widely used out west. More recently, within the last less than 10 years, it's moved its way towards the east coast here and becoming very integral in the resilience of our communities, especially with climate change. So why do we do Fire Smart? Well, here's an example here. Some pictures that were taken from 2023 with the Westwood Hills Tan Talon fire. This is one that our department was deployed down at 10:30 that evening. We got a page and were sent down there. A community, established community nestled in HRM. It blew through there from a simple garbage fire, and the conditions were right. It was hot, it was windy, and basically it started through the neighbourhood. It did not discriminate. Basically, we drove up through there and every second home was destroyed. It was a very, very weird, unpredictable fire. Little capture picture of the Barrington Lake fire. Again, had the opportunity to go to that one as well. Many homes were lost, and that was in history Nova Scotia's largest forest fire. It was pretty devastating for that community. More recently, the Long Lake West Alhousie fire. I was up in there and captured a few of these pictures. Again, conditions, it's climate change. It was hot, extremely dry because we were experiencing drought conditions. The fire blew through very quickly and very rapidly and burned very deep. It's still burning up there. Just to capture a few pictures of the infrastructure, these were telephone poles along the West Alhousie road, totally destroyed, kind of gives you an idea of the intensity of the fire. More recently, shortly on its tail, was the Lake George fire as well, a picture I captured on my way home. Kings County was very fortunate. No homes were lost, but again, too close for comfort. On the right-hand side, there's a quick picture there of the Hanneman Tower. That is the VHF paging tower used by fire departments throughout the Annapolis Valley and surrounding areas. Just shows you the importance of our critical infrastructure that could have been potentially damaged. And when that paging system's down, so is the fire departments. Again, very quickly, the Barrington Lake was the largest forest fire in Nova Scotia's history, forced half of the county there to evacuate, over 60 homes lost, and 250 square kilometres of forest were burned down. We get into the economic development part of it. The Tan Talon fire caused 165 million in insured damages. That does not include the uninsured, and that's what we experienced in the West Alhousie area. There was a large percentage of residents up there that did not have home insurance. Again, Tan Talon fires, over 16,000 people were evacuated and damaged at least 200 properties, including 151 homes. And again, to go up there, you would have thought it would have been a hydrant area. When we were going up, I was looking for hydrants, and there were none up there. So water sources were two to three kilometres away. So it was pretty intense. So again, Fire Smart, it is very database-driven. It has over 30 years of data from across Canada that is used widely to create programming for municipalities and homeowners to mitigate for wildfire and, you know, protect our homes. So basically, I see it as front-loading. We pay massive amounts of insurance afterwards, payouts, and lose critical infrastructure and homes, of course, but it's a program that frontloads. So there's more investment on the frontload for mitigation purposes. Just an overview of, you hear the term WUI, well, that's Wildland Urban Interface. So more and more of our communities are building within the wildland interface area or the forested areas. So it's either on the fringe or within the communities. And we're seeing this more and more with municipalities throughout Nova Scotia. So these are the critical infrastructures that need to be protected. Just understanding behaviour. Again, climate change is a huge factor now. We've heard the term over and over again, but this year we experienced unprecedented drought throughout the province. There was a lot of water sources that were lost, that were usually there on hand, including people's wells. So this affects the wildland behaviour. Again, heat, the drying, the topography, where of course fire goes, burns faster uphill, the time of year, used to be spring, green up, and midsummer, now we've gotten into the fall, which is, again, very unpredictable and unprecedented. Impacts of fire, it can be total devastation. It could be as simple as melting siding on a home. One of the biggest factors of wildfire spread are embers. And I did see that firsthand up in Tan Talon. It was a beautiful Sunday, people were grocery shopping or doing recreational activities. They left the windows up in their homes, left for the day, not realising what would happen. And actually, those embers penetrated into the homes, and a lot of structures were lost because of that. So again, there's some effects. Another home up in the Tan Talon area that was at the top of a hill, very close to where the fire had started. One of the saving graces for this home was how they landscaped their property. You'll see a lot of aggregate in their landscaping, metal fencing, and even solar panels on the roofs. Metal roofs are very effective with wildfire mitigation. So again, it becomes a complex problem. You know, we assume wildfires, it's DNR that looks after it, but when it comes to structures, fire departments are heavily involved in that. So one of the big challenges is, again, fire departments, we do look after structures. That's our main priority, working alongside with DNR when it comes to basic grass fires or smaller brush fires. However, when forest fires become more intense, and you end up with communities that are developed in the wildland urban areas, it can become overwhelming for fire departments. So the one thing about the Fire Smart program is basically taking out one of the sequences. And basically, it's the mitigation, that homeowners do on their own homes, or how municipalities look after their infrastructure. If they can break that sequence, then basically there's less of an impact on the local fire departments and resources do not become overwhelmed. And we all know how much it costs to support the fire departments. So again, fire departments can be very much overwhelmed. We saw that certainly down in the West Alhousie area, Tan Talon, Shelburne, we saw all those fire departments that came from across the province to help. But when they're pulled out of their communities, that can have adverse effects on the communities themselves. This is just a quick little overview of how Fire Smart works. Basically, it's mitigating from your home, so making sure you have double-pane windows, asphalt shingles or metal roofs, cleaning away brush and debris from around your home, and then working your way out into your properties, 10, 30, and 100 metres and so on. So again, that's a little bit of an overview. A lot of, and we saw this out west, in a lot of the fires out there, people plant deciduous shrubs around their homes. One of the larger fires out there, they have footage where embers had blown across the highway, landed in a U bush, or a bush that has a sap in it, basically. And within a minute, that had exploded into flames and basically impinged on the home. From there, it was home-to-home spread. So Fire Smart is, you know, effective planning and cleaning up around your yards. One of the big things about the Fire Smart program is the community involvement. So again, it's part of the fire prevention program. It's homeowners looking after their home, just looking after their yards like they do any other time of the year, just adding little things such as pruning and cutting and cleaning to avoid the advancement of any fires on neighbouring properties or adjacent properties. This is an important slide for municipalities. So what can municipalities do? So public education is one, getting the communities engaged through public education, creating plans, so looking at risk management within the municipality, what type of infrastructure, and, you know, where is it located, and creating a plan on how you can mitigate that. Your trails, for example, are one. So when doing maintenance on your trails, how can you do preventative mitigation on those trails to avoid having those damaged? Because that's part of our social infrastructure as well, for our health and welfare. So again, planning and development as well, looking at, making sure there's at least several egresses out of a community. A lot of the older communities that we have in our municipalities that have been established in the wildland urban areas have one way in, one way out. That creates a danger and a hazard. Making sure your roadways are wide enough as well for fire apparatus to get in and out. Making sure that there's lots of outreach out there for communities as well, and getting buy-in from the fire departments. So again, supporting them through their fire prevention program.
Okay, thank you, Jennifer. I've got to, I know it's very, very, very important. I've let you go an extra couple of minutes there.
No problem.
As you can appreciate. Do you, are you prepared to answer any questions?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay, if any councillor has any questions to Jennifer, okay, councillor Luce?
Thank you, Mayor Corcoran, through you. Thanks for your presentation. Interesting and very timely. One of the things that has been on my mind since the Lake George fire is what you were saying about egress and access. And that was something that a couple months prior to the fire, I had a constituent reach out to me about, who, you know, those lake roads are generally one way in, one way out. A lot of them are private roads. So we don't necessarily have jurisdiction on those roads, they're privately maintained. So are there municipalities currently doing a good job at regulating that type of in-and-out access through their subdivision bylaws or their land use bylaws that we could learn from?
There are, especially in Annapolis, they're starting to take a hard look. You're correct, there are barriers when it comes to private roadways, but it's building partnership, the education as well. Fire departments or neighbourhood representatives, Fire Smart neighbourhood representatives, going in and working with those communities and building partnerships through education to make sure those private landowners are aware. Planners looking also at types of building materials and providing that education as well. Actually, this Thursday, there is a workshop in Halifax, supported through HRM Fire on the Fire Smart program and building and construction. So taking advantage of those workshops is very beneficial as well. But also being cognizant of the social aspects. You know, we realise we cannot force people to use certain building materials because of the cost, and unfortunately, it can be cost prohibitive. However, it's the education part. Small little things make a big difference.
Thank you.
Councillor Gates?
Thank you, through you, Mr. Mayor. One of the things, an excellent presentation that I noticed, you mentioned there was no access to fire hydrants. And in my opinion, having municipal serviced areas would allow for those fire hydrants to be there for quick access to water. So just an important note that I picked up on.
It is. But there's also, there can be the cost barriers as well. You know, municipalities' capacity to look after that infrastructure, because it does come with a cost. However, simple things like working with fire departments and installing dry hydrants, for example, very close to the source are very beneficial as well. So taking a broad look at ways that you can effectively help put in those controls without being too cost prohibitive. It's a good point, though. Very good point.
Councillor Sappington?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I know that my insurance, it goes down because I have a security system in place in my house. Is there a way to incentivise people to perhaps get Fire Smart certified and then maybe get a lower rate on insurance? Is there a program like that?
Yeah, so they are, somebody is looking into that. I haven't sussed out who yet. I haven't sussed out who yet. I'm hoping that's part of, of the fire services review or, you know, from the provincial top down. However, again, working with your local fire, or sorry, your insurance companies, I'm, I'm not going to name names, but there are several insurance companies that are on board with the Fire Smart program. So maybe going to your local insurance, people working with them and saying, hey, what can you do for, for, for these properties as well? So that's a, that's a very good, good point. Yep.
Okay, well, that's great, Jennifer. Normally, these presentations, what we do is if later on, there's more action to be taken, we look to staff to bring us back a, a recommendation, but at this time, I would ask for a motion to receive the great presentation from Fire Smart Canada as provided here on November the 18th, moved by councillor Packford, seconded by councillor Gates. All those in favor or against, please vote accordingly.
I vote in favor.
Perfect. If there's anything at all, please, please reach out. Again, I get very enthusiastic about the program and, and like I say, there's lots of information.
Motion carried, thank you very much.
Perfect, thank you.
Next, we have Citizens Against Uranium Exploration and Mining in Nova Scotia, Megan Dimick and Barry Leslie presenting.
Good morning, I put my timer on here. Okay. My name's Barry Leslie, I'm here representing Citizens Against Uranium Mining in Nova Scotia. I've spoken with a number of you personally on phone, in meetings in the past. It's great to be here addressing council as a whole. Initially, I'd like to start off by reading a letter from Elizabeth Costers, who is retired geologist in our group. So I'll read that first, then I'll move on to my own presentation. My name is Dr. Elizabeth Costers, I'm a retired geologist, I live in Wolfville. I urge Kings County Council to issue a letter to the Nova Scotia Provincial Government to at least pause opening Nova Scotia to uranium exploration and mining, and preferably to reinstate the ban that was legislated in 2009. Your statement should be comparable to the letters sent by the Assembly of Nova Scotia Mi'kmaq Chiefs, the municipalities of Picto County, West Hans, the District of Lunenburg, and Annapolis County. Nova Scotia has uranium. It occurs naturally in the shallow subsurface around the granite bodies that exist in our province. Uranium is a radioactive element and decays to lead over a few billion years. Somewhere in that isotopic chain sits unstable radon-222, a gas. Uranium may exist in your well water and radon-222 may collect in poorly ventilated basements. Long time exposure to both of, both of these materials is a recognized significant public health risk. The Nova Scotia Department of Natural Resources has issued a publicly accessible radon risk map, and anyone can obtain radon test kicks for free at a public library. The public health risks of exposure to naturally occurring uranium and radon-222 can and must continue to be mitigated. As recently as 2019, the Executive Director of Nova Scotia Department of Natural Resources, Don James, now retired, stated publicly that uranium exploration would not result in additional necessary knowledge regarding these known health risks, and that exploring uranium itself had no additional benefits for Nova Scotia. Does Nova Scotia have a large uranium reserve? We don't really know, because Nova Scotia has had a ban on uranium exploration for decades. But what we do know enough about, but what we do know enough, but we do know enough about it to be sure that our reserve is completely insignificant compared with that of Saskatchewan, which has about 20% of the world's uranium reserves, the world's second largest reserve outside Kazakhstan. Saskatchewan's uranium is also of the highest possible quality. Why does this matter? Because no other uranium reserve in Canada would ever be remotely competitive with that of Saskatchewan. In addition, the Saskatchewan Reserve is located in the far northern part of the province in an area the size of Nova Scotia's southern mainland, with a population of less than 2,000 people, all in the First Nation community of Hatchet Lake, Wallaston Lake. Saskatchewan exports 80% of its uranium abroad, that is outside of Canada. If the federal government decided to develop more nuclear power, for example, modular situations, in an effort to combat global warming, the Saskatchewan Reserve would be large enough to fulfill any necessary demand. The Houston government has trespassed all accepted democratic processes in unilaterally opening up the province to uranium exploration. The premier complained that public interest groups who try to protect our natural environment are quote unquote foreign funded activists, but he continues to quote the Mining Association of Nova Scotia, which is an industry lobby group that is 95% foreign funded. I rest my case and hope you will act responsibly and in the interests of all citizens. For myself, I'm going to go through a number of pieces of information here and then summarize. If we look at the health risks, we all know the basics. Nova Scotia has the third highest cancer rate in Canada, of the provinces and territories in Canada. If we expose Nova Scotians to more uranium, radon, through these activities, those cancer rates will increase, and all of that taxes our health system, remember that. When you mine the uranium, and in this area at Millet Brook and in East Dalhousie, it would be open pit mining, there's no other way to mine it. You have uranium dust and leachate from the tailing ponds that blow, the dust blows over the surrounding area and the leachate goes down into the water, the groundwater, and then can travel to wherever it goes. In this case, East Dalhousie, it goes into the La Havre River, and in Millet Brook, it goes into the Avon River. So there are two types, well, there are three, but right now using, being used in Canada, there are two types of uranium mining. Open pit, which would be here in In Situ. If they did the mine in Katamagush, it would be in Situ. That is basically, they're basically fracking for uranium. They drill, they insert water high pressure, they put chemicals down that loosens the uranium from the ore, and they bring the slurry back up and separate it. That creates a whole pile of problems. What do you do with the excess slurry? All right? When you drill down and you put the chemicals into the ground, you cause cracking into the ground, all right? The uranium then is free to flow wherever, we just don't know. All right? So those, there are just so many questions that go unanswered. The tailing ponds, where would they be? Where would the mills for the uranium be? Which is another environmental issue. Moving on, other questions. What royalties, and these are financial, many of them, what royalties would Nova Scotia get? Right now, in gold, Nova Scotia's royalties are only 1% of the net revenue. In comparable gold mines in Australia, they're looking at between 2.5 and 4% of gross revenue. So why are we charging so, why are our royalties so low and what would they be for uranium? We don't know. The people involved have not been consulted and we do not know. Where would the workers come from? In northern Saskatchewan, the workers are imported, and a lot of it now is done by robots. So we don't know how many will be employed. What we do know is that in northern Saskatchewan, which produces 20% of the world's uranium, 1,400 people are employed. So if we look at Nova Scotia, the financial aspect of it, how many jobs will we get? Even if you could do it environmentally in a safe way, how many jobs would we get? There are too many questions that are unanswered to be considering this seriously at all. Then there's the reclamation and the monitoring. Elliot Lake in Ontario still is monitored since the 1960s for uranium. Who pays for that? Not the companies, the governments. Would it be municipal? Would it be provincial? Who does it? It varies. More questions that are unanswered, so we need more consultation. Uranium mining in this area would destroy some farmland, some forestry, some lakes, rivers, would make people sick in some areas, not everywhere, but in some areas. Those are considerations that we haven't talked about. How do we pay for the reclamation? Who's going to do that? If we look at the gypsum in Hans County, it's still there, has, that area hasn't been reclaimed. We look at our history with Tar sands. If we look at Rio Algo in Kentville, that's still a scar on the landscape. Who's doing that? The reclamation historically has not happened here, and if it does happen, who's going to pay it? So we need more consultation. We need more time to look at this. So in summation, I have given you, given you some points to consider regarding uranium mining and exploration in the province. I would like to ask you to explore these further and consult more with the public, with experts, when necessary. Please do not play the role of pawns in this game. Become players who think and behave independently, not players who bow to threats and coercion from those who do not consider our people nor our communities. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Leslie, and as I mentioned to the previous presenter, and I think your request is, is reasonable, that we, a lot of times, will bring presentations back to the staff and ask for, as you say, there's many questions left unanswered, and see if we can get more questions. So thank you again for your presentation, and I would ask for someone to move receipt of the presentation. Moved by councillor Lutz, seconded by councillor Best. All those in favor or against, please vote accordingly.
I vote in favor.
Okay. Thank you, councillor Lutz.
And if I could just ask, if any of you want to speak with me, or any members of the community at any point, contact myself and we'll arrange that.
Okay, sir. Thank you very much. Thanks for coming out so early.
Retired, it's easy.
I used to be. All right, we'll move on to administration. Update on the wind agreement with Greenwich, Greenwich, Wolfville Fire District's CAO Conrod will be presenting.
As we often do, there's certain things under section 22 of the Municipal Government Act that council deals with in closed session, and when it becomes, when the issue is dealt with, if I could phrase it that way, oftentimes it'll come back to public session, so this is one of these occasions. So it's a bit of an update on the wind-up agreement that involved the Greenwich and Wolfville Fire Districts. So the intent here this morning was to provide you with an overview and an update of the mediation process that started in 2022 regarding the Greenwich and Wolfville Fire Districts. So if we go back to 2022, on August 4th, the province appointed Frank Demont, KC, as a mediator and arbitrator. And so one of his first jobs was to, was to try to get a framework agreement in place between the municipality, the Greenwich Fire Commission, and the Greenwich Volunteer Fire Department. So we spent, I believe, two days in Halifax doing that, and we reached that framework agreement. And then subsequently, that framework agreement was amended to include the town of Wolfville. So then, basically, it spelled out the terms of what could be mediated and arbitrated in that framework agreement. Sort of advanced to more recent times, the work of that joint committee, Mr. Demont ran into an impasse on the location of a new fire station. So there were, I don't know, just from memory, probably more than a dozen points that were agreed to, the structure, who the fire chief would report to, the role of the municipality and the role of the town, dissolution of the fire commission. So there were a whole bunch of items that were in that framework agreement that were agreed to, and, but then subsequently, we could not find agreement on a new fire station. So on December 17th, given that impasse, on December 17th, 2024, and March 4th, 2025, you may recall that there was instruction given to myself in closed session to include the following points within a wind-up agreement, and that wind-up agreement was executed. So what I've put together here, I believe there are seven or eight points, and then in red font is where each of these points presently stand. So the agreement said that the parties agreed to wind up mediation and arbitration, subject to there being number one, bilateral discussions between Wolfville and Kings on a new fire station in Wolfville. So those are ongoing, there's certainly, there's nothing at this point that's ready to come back to municipal council, but that will be forthcoming. The second point is the wind-up agreement was subject to Kings and the Greenwich Volunteer Fire Department entering into a five-year fire services operation agreement with year-over-year increases being limited to the Consumer Price Index. So that was developed, completed, and executed. The third point, under your instruction, was that the Greenwich Fire Commission to dissolve with the support of the Greenwich Volunteer Fire Department. I can recall the mayor and councillor Sappington and some municipal staff were at a public meeting that was convened by the Fire Commission, and they achieved a vote from the ratepayers to dissolve. So then that was submitted to the minister, who made a recommendation to cabinet, and on October 21st, so very recently, the Nova Scotia Lieutenant Governor issued an order dissolving the Fire Commission. So there's no longer a Fire Commission in Greenwich. Number four, upon dissolution, transfer the Greenwich Fire Commission assets and liabilities to the municipality, then transfer immediately to the Greenwich Volunteer Fire Department. So most of the, under the Royal Fire District Act, which allowed the body corporate to form with the, with the Greenwich Fire Commission, the assets and loans and whatnot were on the balance sheet of the commission. So there's, we're now going through a process where they're being, almost instantaneously crossing our books onto the Greenwich Volunteer Fire Department. So the deed to the building, title to the vehicles, those types of things. Mr. Demont retained jurisdiction over finalizing the Greenwich Fire Services Operation Agreement, which now, because it's executed, is complete. Kings and the Greenwich Volunteer Fire Department confidentially explored potential consolidation with Port Williams, and the status was concluded not to pursue consolidation with Port Williams. Mr. Demont was to report to the minister, provide draft to the parties to review. So that has happened, and the report has been filed with the province of Nova Scotia, which was basically about the status of Royal Fire Commissions throughout the province, but specifically, obviously, here in Kings County. So my read of Mr. Demont's report is that he made some fairly cogent arguments about it being a dated model and a bit of an obstacle to modernizing fire service. In terms of financial implications, there were, of course, legal expenses, which were covered by the parties themselves. With respect to our legal expenses, they were covered under annual legal under annual legal line item budget. The mediator arbitrator, arbitrator, excuse me,'s work was primarily covered by the province. Other study expenses that happened since twenty twenty-two were shared with the town. And the expenses associated with the transfer of assets are funded from the wind-up of the Greenwich Fire Commission. Any change in this approach will be reported. So for example, there's be, there's an appraisal that's going on in the building to determine its value, to put on a balance sheet and the vehicles and that type of thing. Those type, that type of background work is being funded out of the, the net proceeds that are remaining on the Fire Commission's books. So the recommendation here this morning is that committee of the whole receive for information a briefing on the present status of the wind-up of the mediation arbitration agreement between the municipality, town of Wolfville, Greenwich Fire Commission, and the Greenwich Volunteer Fire Department.
Any questions to the C A O on his presentation? No? Okay. Would somebody like to move the recommendation, please? Moved by councillor McPherson, second by councillor Gates. All those in favor or against, vote accordingly.
I vote in favor.
Thank you, Robbie. Motion carried. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Conrod. Now we'll move on to the strategic plan and... You don't look like Scott Conrod.
Teamwork's making the dream work today. So good morning, mayor and council. It is my pleasure to present your draft strategic plan in collaboration with the C A O today. The plan positions the municipality to achieve goals established by council. The plan's strength is that it's as defined as it is nimble and as aspirational as it is attainable. I'm looking forward to getting into greater detail with you today. Generally, strategic plans provide clear direction and a roadmap for success. They assist in aligning an organization's resources and teams toward common goals and support proactive, evidence-based decision-making while enabling adaptability in an evolving environment. The vision, mission, and values of the municipality of the county of Kings have been established by municipal council and have informed this strategic plan. The vision of the municipality is to be a community of communities where all people belong. And our mission is, respective of residents' needs, we endeavor to enhance the quality of life for all through the provision, excuse me, of municipal services in an inclusive, effective, efficient, and collaborative manner. Our values are present in each decision we make and in the work we undertake. Oops, sorry. They are accountability, meaning the obligation to accept responsibility for one's actions and decisions and to be answerable for the outcome or impact. Diversity, which is the deliberate celebration and intentional inclusion of the full range of human experience present throughout the municipality. Excellence, meaning consistently striving for higher standards and continuous improvement. Innovation, which is finding new or improved ways in offering municipal services. Integrity, which is to say, acting with honesty and being truthful in your words and deeds. Respect, meaning due regard for the well-being of others, cultural practices, and the value systems of other people. Transparency is defined as the visible and accessible sharing of information, especially concerning decision-making. And lastly, stewardship, meaning methods of operations to ensure a resource is responsibly cared for and not depleted or permanently damaged. Our vision, mission, and values guided the establishment of key strategic priorities, or K S Ps. Each of the five K S Ps lists focus, contain lists of focus areas and projects which are considered during budget deliberations and in the assignment of municipal resources. The municipality remains accountable for the work in this plan by regularly updating the public and council on our progress. This document is, by design, a dynamic and adaptable plan. It positions the municipality to achieve goals established by council while strategically responding to emergent opportunities. And importantly, it will be central to the development of upcoming work plans and budgets. The key strategic priorities for twenty-five to twenty-nine are strong communities, which enable support for vibrant, diverse, welcoming, and sustainable communities through enhanced infrastructure, recreation programming, engagement opportunities, advocacy, and continued responsible land use planning. Environmental stewardship asks that we integrate climate and sustainability considerations in our decision-making processes, and that we make significant investments in municipal and community-based initiatives. Economic development supports the undertaking or facilitation of sustainable development and promotional opportunities beneficial to our economy and community. Good governance encourages the enhancement of communication with communities and asks that we continually review and evaluate processes, agreements, and partnerships to improve efficiency and effectiveness. And lastly, financial sustainability encourages that we focus on enhanced sustainability of municipal operations through continuous improvement. For greater clarity on the structure of the plan, we have included this graphic today, which details how the plan assists in operationalizing council's strategic direction into various projects and initiatives. At that time, you can see that where the projects and initiatives are listed, the work becomes the responsibility of the C A O, which also means it's a great time for me to pass the mic to C A O Conrod.
Thank you. So as Ms. Traynor has mentioned that this is, is a draft, I would like to, to highlight the fact that it should be your plan, needs to be your plan. So by all means, be comfortable with it. The key strategic priorities are broken out into these five categories. And the first one is strong communities. So in your R F D that was presented and in the publication that eventually will be posted publicly, it, it has a bit of a timeline. So they're broken out, not in finite detail, obviously, but between twenty-five, twenty-six, the present year, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, and twenty-eight, twenty-nine. So I'm not going to talk about what happens in each of those years. You have that in front of you. But in terms of strong communities, there was, it was some wording or verbiage around accessibility. And the highlights in accessibility, as we know, it's under provincial statute. The province creates standards. So we, we felt that that was, in our conversations with you, would be a strategic priority to make sure that we're ready to implement those standards as they're being enacted by the province. And one of the ways that we can perhaps do that is to make sure that we have a budgeted reserve, that we're building up a nest egg. So when these standards come upon us, it's not sticker shock all at once, that there's, there's a nest egg that we can use together with grants, hopefully, to, to implement those types of things. In terms of active transportation, there is, again, a four-year G A N T, so to speak, or schedule of things. The first year is really finishing up what has been referred to in the past as safe, safe routes to schools. There's also some Harvest Moon extensions. And then the upcoming years will be a renewal of that plan, and then also aligning that plan with the new municipal specifications. Advocacy is one that is really in your domain, not really in staff's domain, but it would be, we heard from our roundtable with you, that you think it's important to continue advocating for things like cellphone coverage, affordable housing. So as those initiatives arise, advocating for those initiatives, also working with the N S F M and the F C M and those undertakings. Belonging, the, broke out again here, basically in two blocks, as you would note here on page eighteen of the presentation. It's, it's, it's continuing the implementation of the strategy for belonging. So for example, multilingual municipal signage would be an example of that. There's also the integration of equity and diversity into the municipal operations. So we know that we have greater work to do in that space and also clarify our relationships with the towns and the villages here in, in Kings County. For community facility development, this would be a good example of the things that we're hearing during our district meetings. So in councillor Best's district meeting, there was someone that came to the table that was hosted by the mayor and myself and had two, if not, well, there was two specific ideas that were, I think, were fairly credible ideas that we can hopefully bring back during budget deliberation to see if there's interest. One actually, or it's conceivable both don't have a monetary thing, but would take some, some type of planning. There's also the notion, for example, in this one, about modifying the, the municipal grants to allow district grants. Again, I'm sort of looking at councillor Best because I know that came from a suggestion that he made. So those types of things we would bring back during a budget cycle and say, you know, is council interested? The latter one that I just mentioned is actually in draft form, will, will come at the next meeting. So critical infrastructure management is the next bucket here, under this category of strong communities. I won't spend much time. I'm picking up on the verbiage here, specifically on director Carrigan, that we obviously need to do more engineering reviews, is the term he likes to use, to be, you know, to be prepped here for two things, to be in compliance with our operating permits and to also be application-ready for larger infrastructure projects. So that is broken out over these four years. The next category here is land use planning. I'm interested to hear from the deputy mayor on his agenda addition, because it probably fits right under this bucket, in terms of what would be looked at in what year. The recreation, it's, you'll see here, again, on page, this is on page nineteen, that there's some just suggestions that we need to assemble the partners and come up with a framework agreement, a memorandum of understanding on the regional recreation facility, to make sure that two things, that we're all on the same page and that we're proceeding through what I was referring to in past presentations as a step process. So, you know, you have to, you look at all the different steps, and at the end of looking at all the different steps, make a decision. But there's a lot of considerations and a lot of different elements. The next bucket is a little shorter here. It's environmental stewardship. And two categories here for your consideration on page twenty of the report. One is corporate greening, and the second is renewable energy. So corporate greening are things like projects that are being in design now, engineering design now for net-zero meter and other efficiency upgrades. So some significant work going from, on solar and alternative uncoupling of wastewater systems to link them to alternative energy. The second one is primarily related to the Metaview Solar Project. I did attend a solar workshop in Halifax two weeks ago, basically on the financing of these projects. It was, it was a very, very good workshop. Some of these projects that we're talking about are not easy projects. They're multi-year projects. But incrementally, I think we're, we're getting there. And if I could creep my own bias in, that, that's one I certainly hope we are, are continuing, because we're very close to being application-ready with our partners. Economic development. So the key projects in this, under the, under the K S P of economic development, would be commercial tax-based growth. And again, you'll recall from our prior conversations that we are very fortunate in that our financial condition index, our, most of our ratios are green, almost all of our ratios are green. We're very healthy in that regard. But one of the ones that we'd like to see improvement is, is the amount of commercial tax that we collect. There's also, so I mean, that would obviously translate into doing things with, like the holdings that we have in Cambridge off of the new interchange that's going in. In terms of partnerships, it would be continued projects with the, with the Valley R E N. So for example, the Valley R E N does maintain a database on land, and we received a request here late last week that's been referred to the Valley Waste to follow up on, on someone who's interested in land holdings here in the valley, in our municipality. And in terms of, I guess there's an old adage, how does it go? If you fail to plan, you plan to fail. So there is a strategy in place, but the strategy needs to be updated in terms of economic development, so that we have a blueprint to follow. Good governance. Several here. One is communications. So we are proposing here to follow up on what we're hearing at the district meetings about communication. We've been specifically asking people at the district meetings what their preferences are, how, how would they like, what, what channels would they like us to use to communicate? So there's a survey that we're, we're going to rely to some degree to make improvements based upon that structure or those suggestions. So we're going to update our strategy here. The duty, duty to consult is, falls out of federal legislation. And so what we want to do is do a much better job in that regard. And it's something that, you know, under, as an obligation of the municipality, we need to do, it's the right thing to do, in my estimation. It's, it's part of truth and reconciliation. You know, it, it's the developing how that we approach this in, in terms of some of our projects, our engineering projects that are going forward, and then making sure that we have an implementation strategy in place that where we have time to do duty to consult, and that's sort of baked into our planning process. Engagement is, is another area here. I'm sorry, I must have missed this on this slide here early this morning. But again, that's, that was something that I recall from our roundtable was a much talked-about item among councillors about having more engagement. I can recall the deputy mayor and councillor Sappington in particular raising that question about getting out there more, hoping that we can continue to improve upon the district meetings. But then there are other engagement aspects as well. So for example, as part of a strategy, we're, we're now in the throes of trying to have staff-to-staff communications with the, with the M L A offices and with the M P offices, so that we have better cooperation to solve things quicker. So that would be an example of more engagement that we can bring to the table. Indigenous engagement is, is another one in this area, and that is to collaborate with our, with our friends and neighbors. So we do have M O U's in place, but there's more work to do specifically on our part. Oh, I guess I did have that. Excuse me. That's, was under good governance. My apologies. I was thinking I missed them off a slide, but there they are. In terms of the next category here, financial sustainability, this would be the, the fifth of the key strategic priorities. And three main areas here, asset management. And we list here on page twenty-three of the report that we're proposing in these, in the four years, in the first two years at least, that we do two things. The first thing is that we improve our reserve elements of capital financing, so that, as you've heard me talk about on a couple of occasions now, that we mitigate the up and down in the tax rate, that we can have a more flat or sustainable tax rate through the use of reserve financing. And then the next year, a part of that, that dovetails quite nicely in that is update our wastewater reserve impairment. So we did have an impairment put together by director Livingston a few years back now that looked at how much cash do we have in a reserve versus what our, what our upcoming requirements were for asset replacement, and that's referred to as an impairment. So are those two in balance? They weren't back then, so that needs to be updated to make sure that we have an appropriate amount in a reserve to, to mitigate increases in taxes. The third one here, well, the second one, excuse me, is the cost analysis of, on strategic projects. So we want to develop a bit of a framework on that and implement that. So we're into typically larger projects than what the municipality has been used to. So there's all kinds of different ways of looking at what the best return on investment is, and whether you're looking at this as an internal rate of return, as some accountants refer to, net present value, those types of things to evaluate what the best option might be. So is the best option, after you get the technical solution in, then it has to come down to what's whole-of-life cost? You know, is it the best financial approach? So we want to do some work in that area. And the third one is a review of municipal revenue sources to explore new revenue opportunities. So one example that we, I recall that councillor Peckford is very keen on, is shown here as an example on page twenty-three, is the management of municipal biosolids. So if that's one of our larger cost drivers, can we start in next year getting twenty-six, twenty-seven? Sounds like a long way away. It's really not. It's right around the corner of looking at what we do with municipal biosolids as an example. So that's basically it. Myself or manager Traynor would be happy to field any questions that you may have.
Okay. If you have any questions, councillor Gates.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Great presentation, Scott. One of the ones I might add for the strategic plans that drives our budget is we've all gone through the recent COVID and what it can do to, to our budgets and possibly the last fires, but maybe some discussion about where we put maybe some reserves for potential... last fires, but maybe some discussion about where we put maybe some reserves for potential, maybe it's a COVID, maybe it's something, but I'm just wondering if that's part of the things that we should have in our discussion as well?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to the councillor, I think that's an, an excellent thing for council to be talking about, we can add some language in that. One thing that immediately comes to mind is there's an FCI ratio on the amount you have in your general operating reserve. So we could come back with details on that, which is basically if something catastrophically happens, catastrophic happens, you're to have a percentage of your annual revenue set aside in a reserve to, to impact that, so not having to immediately go out and borrow some things. So I think that's a really good point, but happy to put the wording around that.
Councillor McPherson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you, thank you very much for the very detailed presentation of our strategic plan. For me, strategic plan is probably the most important document that we deal with within our tenure of a four, four-year council. I'm actually quite pleased and proud with the vision that we have identified within the plan. The point I want to get to is this plan really is going, currently it defines our priorities as a council, but at the end of the day, at the end of the four years, it's actually only defined whether or not we have been an effective or successful council as well. It's really the driving force of what we do. I think we need to be, as much as I appreciate the presentation today, I, I think we're a little bit light on the check-ins as we move forward with every decision making in our, in our direction as a council. And what I'm wondering is if it would not make sense on an annual basis in a workshop format to sit down as council for a few hours. We have an opportunity today to quite briefly and quickly give some feedback to your presentation, but I think this document warrants more time because it really does define and direct where we should be going. So I'm recommending that on an annual basis, we take a half-day in a workshop format to really sit down and look and each of the, what did you call them, the KSPs, each of the KSPs and what we've accomplished and what the next year looks like and, and just to provide that input and feedback as we move forward. That's the importance I put on this document. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Sappington.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. First off, I'd like to say that I've appreciated this year the opportunities for engagement through growing Greenwich, question mark, engagement sessions as well as our district meeting and, and I appreciated in particular the children's section that, that we had. I, I wonder, if I may, that we might be missing some prime opportunities for engagement that already exists. Like I know we have these huge, well-attended, end of the year, my kids look forward to it every year, that the Recreation Department puts on the big foam party and I know that there's a huge crowd with that. And so I feel like perhaps it is those sorts of events where the county does gather that we can perhaps have that engagement sort of organically, holistically, because sometimes when we have those set nights, especially on a work night, it's, it's hard to get people. And so if we go to those crowded, whether it's Apple Blossom Festival or the Christmas Parade or something where the crowd is already gathered to be able to make, to be there and present as the County of Kings also allows that engagement to happen, I believe, just a suggestion. Thank you.
I, I think Deputy Mayor's suggestion was, is a great suggestion. I, I do have a comment and I, I don't want it to seem to be negative, but, because I, I really appreciate the structure, but I, I'm a little bit concerned at, right at the beginning, we talked about communities and, and how we can become more accessible and maybe transportation. And I know being involved with the Kings Transit, everybody would like to have the transit bus go to their community. The Kings County is made up of a lot of rural areas and I, I'm, I'm a little bit concerned at the beginning if, that we're maybe over-promising and under-delivering because we can't really afford to, I mean, to provide ideal transportation and accessibility. I mean, it would be wonderful, but in, in real, realistically, we can't send a Kings Transit bus to Burlington as an example, or Scotts Bay as an example. So I'm, I'm, I'm a little bit concerned that we have to make sure that the public realizes there is an affordability factor and, and, you know, we, we want to do the best we can for as many communities as, as we, we can, but it's, it's just not possible to be perfect when it comes to a municipality this large in some of these rural areas. And, and so I, I really, again, I don't want to be negative, I just don't want us to be perceived as over-promising and under-delivering and that's, that's the only part of this presentation that, that would concern me. I don't know if you want to comment on that or just leave it.
Well, I can, I would say, Mr. Mayor, that I don't feel that I'm the, the right person. This is obviously your reference as an example to KTA would be a KTA and I know that there's, there's root analysis going on at KTA and I'm also thinking about our accessibility coordinator, Katie MacArthur, would be a, a better subject matter expert. Not, it's, obviously we're an owner of KTA, we would be, you know, we would come back through, through you as chair and our representative at looking at that root analysis. I also had the, what I would characterize as the good fortune of going to two presentations that was put on by the former executive director of that directorate at the time and he used transit as, as a perfect example of the work that needs to be done in accessibility. So he described, you know, the bus comes up to the curb and the curb probably should be cut or needs to be cut. The bus should be lowered. I can remember saying that there should be a sign on the bus that talks to the people who are hearing impaired. There should be, you know, audio that talks to the people who are visually impaired. You go on the bus and the bus driver should have certain type of background in this. And I just thought that that was, so there's, there's a lot of accessibility things that, that are not necessarily always bricks and mortar or bricks and mortar that are related to things that we're doing anyway, whether it's a curb and sidewalk or, or, or that type of thing. So I think that's the, the type of thing that the municipality can help with or if it's in our swim lane, Ms. MacArthur can plan for and some of the things hopefully aren't big-ticket items, but I, I get your point. All I'm trying to say is again, some things need to be stepped through and at least you're, you're progressing in the, in that, in that direction.
Well, and I, I, I agree and I'll use your words some, that sometimes it's a situation that we, we can't always afford everything, but, but we can do better. I think we're doing very well and I think we can do better, but at the end of the day, there's no great bucket of money in the sky that's, you know, and, and there is a limit to what any municipality can afford and I, I think we, we all have to be cognizant of that. But anyway, we do have a recommendation that committee of the whole recommend municipal council to approve the draft 2025-29 Strategic Plan as attached to the November eighteenth, 2025 request for a decision. Do we have a move or a seconder, please? Move by Councillor Harding, second by Councillor Allen. All those in favor or against, please vote accordingly.
I vote in favor.
Thank you, Councillor Hiltz.
Mr. Mayor, if I could have one final comment?
Yes.
Thank you. So.
Motion carried.
With your indulgence, with council's indulgence, I'll incorporate the comments, or we will incorporate the comments that we heard around the table here this morning in an updated draft. Additionally, I would like to thank the directors and managers for their input and there are other things that I know that are more core-related that we're looking towards to do, like day-to-day types of things, continual improvement types of things, but certainly one of the themes I'm hearing here this morning is engagement and I, I look around, I'm Councillor Peckford and I've had several conversations about, you know, involving staff and things like creating inventory and that type of thing. So, you know, we, we want this to go throughout the organization in terms of continual improvement, doing better and advancing these strategic projects, so it'll, it'll be a, a large team effort. Thank you.
I guess it all boils down to communication, doesn't it? Thank you. All right, now we'll move on to, and thank you, Ms. Trainer, too. All right, information technology, renaming a section of the Waterville Mountain Road to Gris Mill Court. Mr. Chad Hiltz, our manager of IT, will be presenting.
Before I start, I would just like to take the opportunity to introduce Ms. Luanne Camo, which maybe some of you have, maybe some of you have not. She is the Civic Address Coordinator and this presentation is based on her hard work, so I didn't want to take the credit for that. I'm here today to discuss renaming of a small section of Waterville Mountain Road and the reason that this is needed is due to the Highway 101 interchange project that's happening in Cambridge-Waterville area and due to that, there will be a road realignment on Highway One as well. So looking at the map on the screen, you can see a new roundabout which is to be added at the intersection of Waterville Mountain Road and Highway number one and that will be slightly to the east of the existing intersection. And then that will result in the first portion of Waterville Mountain Road becoming a cul-de-sac which requires a new name. So you can see a little bit closer version of the map here, the four properties that would be impacted by this realignment and the red line there designates the rough location where the road would be severed and a cul-de-sacs to be constructed. So this is all part of the provincial project and Waterville Mountain Road is a provincial road and so this is all part of that larger construction project that's going on there. As part of their work, the Nova Scotia Department of Public Works has a process where they reach out to municipalities to coordinate road renaming. So we received a request from them to rename the, the severed portion or the to-be-severed portion. And as part of our process, under Bylaw 96, we conducted petitions and the first petition, there's four residents as indicated, we only received two of four in agreement, so that was a fifty percent agreement. So a second round of petition was conducted and we received seventy-five percent agreement on that name, so three of four. Bylaw 96, Section 15E does require eighty percent agreement, which in this instance would be all residents in agreement, so we didn't quite achieve that threshold. However, Bylaw 96, Section 15G states that in cases where an existing road name is creating a public safety issue based upon input from emergency responders, the Civic Address Coordinator shall initiate a street rename or a street name change without a petition to affected residents seeking council approval directly. So this situation, we did conduct the petition, so it's a little bit of a hybrid scenario. However, since we didn't achieve the eighty percent, we're bringing it to you under the Section 15G of the bylaw. In this instance, a public safety issue would arise if it's not renamed as, if an emergency responder was to proceed on Waterville Mountain Road, they wouldn't actually encounter those four residents, so it wouldn't be suitable to keep that section with the same name. So the recommended new name is Gris Mill Court and this is a name that was suggested by one of the residents that, following the first failed petition and it was due to nearby historic presence of a grist mill, which is a mill that's used for grinding grain and flour. It is located very near to where this new cul-de-sac will be. You can see on the screen here actually the church map, which we have a copy in the, the lobby, we were able to use that map to identify that the grist mill was where the resident said it was, so that was a good use of an old map that we have. Terms of financial implications, there's no cost to the municipality for this other than the staff cost to coordinate. All costs are borne by the Nova Scotia Department of Public Works and road ownership does not change as part of this renaming, so that will remain with Department of Public Works for Nova Scotia as well. And there was an effort made to minimize the cost to residents, so to do that, we kept the numbers the same, so they're not going to change their number, they don't need to change their signage unless they had a special sign with the road name or something like that. There could be some small costs to the residents if they needed to update their documents that had their address and things on it. Hopefully they'll be able to kind of do that over time. In terms of implementation, again, not much really for the municipality to do. Luanne would inform the Department of Public Works of the approved name and notify the property owners of the approved name as well and update the road name in the Nova Scotia Civic Address file. Remaining work would all be undertaken by the, the province. So given all of that, the recommendation is that committee of the whole recommend municipal council approve renaming Section KI 0722 of Waterville Mountain Road to Gris Mill Court as described in the report dated November eighteenth, 2025 and happy to take any questions.
Okay, thank you. Any questions to Mr. West, the presentation? Okay, I do have a question. I, I prefer to, if I could, Mr. West, to direct it to Ms. Camo because you said that she did all the work and you were not wanting to take the credit, so I would direct it towards her.
Certainly. She was slightly nervous about presenting without having been here, but I'm sure she'll come up to the podium.
It won't be that difficult, really. It won't be that difficult, you can stay right there, really. I grew up in, in Waterville and my family was there for all kinds of years, Corkham. Was there any consideration to any other names for this road? That would be my question.
I didn't know that.
Oh, all right, I forgive you. All right, do we have a, a motion, please? Move by Councillor Best, second by Councillor Sappington to approve the recommendation. All in favor or against, please vote accordingly.
Yay.
Motion carried. He just asked me, my middle name was Gris Mill. All right, thank you, Mr. West and Ms. Camo. All right, board and committee reports. We have no written reports submitted. Are there any verbal reports from any councillors? Okay, we'll move on to external boards and committees. Is there any external boards, any reports? And that would include you too, Councillor Hiltz, if you're... Okay. All right, so we're down to number ten. Thank you again. Number ten, A, infill, Deputy Mayor McPherson.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Through you, many of us around this table have been approached in the past year by citizens questioning the small plots of land that are zoned A1 farmland but are no longer conducive to farming for many different reasons. And I, I'd like to put a motion on the table, if I may, that may open the floor to some discussion on the topic. Would you be willing to?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion would read that council direct staff to do a study of the benefits or drawbacks or the impact of increasing infill from three hundred to five hundred feet.
Okay, do we have a seconder? Second by Councillor Best. Okay, any further discussion? No? All right. All those in favor or against? All those in favor or against, please vote accordingly.
Yay.
Thank you. And I think that's an excellent suggestion there, Deputy Mayor. And now we'll move on to the second one. 10B, Global, sorry, can't even make out my own writing, but it's councillor Sappington.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's a global summit going on in Toronto. I've been fortunate to take part through the Nova Scotia Federation of Municipalities coursework for the past three months in regards to the Strong Cities Network, creating stronger cities, thriving cities, and learning about the threat to democracy, whether it comes to misinformation, cyber hate. I've taken the liberty of page two and three to highlight the pillars. I want to first say that I apologize that this was quite sudden. The request for the mayor to sign a declaration that's going to be presented by Toronto Mayor Chow at the Global Summit came in. And so the mayor and Scott felt that it was only prudent that we present it before council before the mayor signs it. I feel like a lot of these pillars, we already do as a municipality. For instance, safeguarding community safety and wellbeing. I know that a lot of these that we do through Diversity Kings as well, but I wanted to make sure that we ran it by you. There is no financial contribution from our municipality. Again, I was funded through a grant to participate, a federal grant. There is a commitment, I saw at the bottom, that says that we commit to sharing with the Strong Cities Network on an annual basis, the actions we've taken to try to implement this declaration. And so I just wanted to point that out before hopefully getting your approval for the mayor to sign the declaration.
So would you like to make that as a motion?
Yes, please. I move.
Okay. That we have the mayor sign a letter of support for the Strong Cities?
Yes, please. Thank you.
Okay. And we have a seconder, second by councillor Gates. So now it's open for discussion, and I'll make one quick comment. After discussing this with councillor Sappington, I felt there wasn't anything wrong with it, but I did think that, I think it was more appropriate to come back here to council and have your approval rather than me just send, send the letter of approval without council being in the loop. So that's, that's the reason why she's bringing it, not that I felt that there was anything wrong with it, okay? All right. Anyone have any comments? No? All right. All those in favor or against, please vote accordingly.
Yay.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Motion carried with the exception of councillor Sappington.
Maybe it's a conflict of interest.
All right. All right. Can we get a motion to adjourn, please? Move by councillor Luke, second by councillor Harding. All those in favor or against, please vote accordingly. You can vote this time now, councillor Sappington.
Okay.
All right. Motion carried. Thank you, councillor Hiltz. Hopefully, your back's better soon. Thank you to all the staff that joined us. All right.